Good evening, welcome to City Council meeting for January 25th, 2022. This meeting is being conducted under guidelines from Governor Sisalak. All those in attendance are required to wear a face mask whether vaccinated or not. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I will call the meeting to order. The agenda has been properly posted. Councilmember Bridges is participating in the meeting via telephone. All other members of council are present in chambers. And we will, is Pastor King here? Oh, I didn't see you. Pastor King, if you would come forward, we will have the invocation. Please rise.
Thank you. It's an honor, again, a privilege to be here before you and to serve in this capacity. So thank you for the invitation. It's a blessing for me. So ask everybody to join me in a word of prayer. Father in heaven, we thank you, God, for the opportunity to come together and to handle business as it relates to this community, this city, our neighbors. Lord, I lift up the leadership of this city, those that sit in the seats before me, those that are heading up departments around us, all those that are in public service, God, we thank you for them. Your word tells us that a provision and protection of peace and order are what government is for, and we thank you for those that you have seen fit to set that responsibility in their hands. It is no small thing, God, and so we ask that you would give them wisdom for the task, strength and endurance for the task, and God, that you would see fit to bless the leadership of this town with a sense of unity and of shared goals, that with one heart they would desire to see those things done best for this community with our resources and for the days that are in front of us, God. So I thank you for them and I pray that you would bless this meeting tonight with that same peace and order with the common goal of the betterment of our town, God. We love Boulder City, we thank you for it, and we ask you for these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, thank you Pastor King. Madam City Clerk, were there any public announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. We'll have our initial public comment period then. As stated in the agenda, public comment may have been submitted prior to the meeting via email. Anyone in chambers will also be given an opportunity to speak. During this initial period, comment is limited to matters on the agenda for action. Each person wishing to speak during the public comment period will have up to five minutes. As always, we request that you be civil and concise in your comments. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to speak during the initial public comment period? All right, we will then go to anyone wishing to call in. The phone number to call in is 702-589-9629.
Public comment?
Yes, I have public comment, please.
Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, council. For the record, Fred Volz. Because Agenda Item Number Six, Ordinance Number B1913, appears for the first time tonight, the City Council will not be taking any final action on it. However, the need for the proposed revisions has been festering for many, many years, lagging behind similar safeguards in place at most other communities around the country. Boulder City's current ordinance lacks the enforceability and effectiveness required to protect the city's human and animal populations from harm. Some people claim that unpredictable reactions of their uncontrolled dogs to other dogs, other people, scents, or visual cues can be consistently and instantly controlled and corrected because of prior training or voice commands. Unfortunately, when an animal's instinct is triggered, any training that might have happened in the past often quickly morphs into dangerous responses, attacks, and injuries. The legal liability to the city and its taxpayers from injuries to a child, other dogs, seniors, or any other entity capable of bringing a lawsuit against the city could be massive when the city knows of the many problems yet takes no action. Hopefully, these ordinance changes will be swiftly approved and implemented. Thank you, and I would ask that these comments be added verbatim to the record of tonight's meeting.
Thank you. This is the initial public comment period for City Council meeting. Anyone wishing to call in, the phone number is 702-589-9629.
Is this an appropriate time for me to speak?
Let's give it just one more minute if someone is going to call in, and then we'll give you an opportunity to speak. All right, it doesn't appear that we have any other callers. If you'd like to step forward and please state your name.
Thank you. My name's Elaine Alessandro Kraus. I'm a resident here in Boulder City. I've sent several emails to all the members of the City Council regarding the leash law or the, or Item Number Six. I thank you for your time with that, and I just want to add that I wholeheartedly agree with the gentleman that called in. I've had multiple, multiple incidences where my dog is leashed, the other dogs are not. They've caused physical harm to my dog, to myself. My husband is a veteran with post-traumatic stress disorder, and dogs charging at us do not bode well for his mental health conditions. I am actually a certified trainer of dogs. It's not what I do for a living. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and I work with humans. But I think I live two doors down from the park, and we can hear screaming when we're in our backyard of people trying to control their dogs. And clearly with dog fights, we've been approached by dogs who were being shocked with shock collars, who were not responding to shocks. My 80-year-old mother was ran into a trash can by a dog playing in a group. So I could go on and on. I've sent you many emails, and I'm just going to say that I wholeheartedly hope that we embrace a more restrictive leash law here so that we can have, people can enjoy the park. I hear a lot of people say, I don't walk in, and I live across from Veterans Memorial Park. I don't walk there because of the number of dogs off-leash. I'm afraid, my kids are afraid, I don't want my dog to be harmed, or that sort of thing. So I won't take any more of your time, but thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to speak in public comments? Madam City Clerk, did we have any emails received?
Yes, there's one public comment. This is from Mary Edelstein regarding Agenda Items 12 and 13. I would like to suggest that Items Number 12 and 13 be removed from the agenda and that council take a closer look at what is being suggested by finance. It would appear that we have a surplus of $7 million, and the city is trying to figure out what to do with that money. The budget process has just begun, contract negotiations are going to be starting soon, both of which will have a financial impact, and we don't know the outcome at this time. My suggestion is to wait to make a decision on those two items until end of April or May, when there is a better understanding of where we need the money to go. But for sure, an additional 3.1 million to our swimming pool seems unnecessary at this time. As for Item 13, I would like to hear from the Chief of Police about these funds and how he will need to use them before any action is taken. So please remove Items 12 and 13 from the agenda and discuss at a future date. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll give one last opportunity. If there is anyone who would like to call in for public comment, the phone number is Hearing no others for public comment, we will close the public comment period, move to approval of the regular agenda. Any changes, Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I would like to remove Item 15. Bring this, I would bring this back in the first meeting in February. There was a death in the family of one of the attorneys that was supposed to be here, so I would request to remove Item 15.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
Thank you. City Council, any changes for the regular agenda?
No changes.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the regular agenda with the removal of Item Number 15.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll move to approval of the consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, any changes?
No changes.
Madam City Attorney?
No changes.
And Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Thank you. Council, any changes for the consent agenda?
No changes.
No changes.
Anyone wishing to move for approval?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That will bring us then to Item Number Four, Presentation of the City Manager's Annual Report. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The City Manager typically presents to the council at the beginning of each year with an annual report. This year, I'll be highlighting for the council and the community the results of the performance measures tracked during financial year 2021, and this is the second year of complete data related to the performance measures. This is from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021. And with two full years of data, I'm also comparing the figures to the financial year 2020 data. So what is performance measurement anyway, and why are we tracking the data? It measures our results, it shows progress, costs, and quality of those services that we provide. The International City County Managers Association emphasizes that sound performance measures are found at the heart of all good management systems. Additionally, this allows us to know if we are accomplishing our goals while quantifying our objectives in our strategic plan. Performance measures also engage the staff, the governing body, and the residents, as all are involved and want to see well-run services. So what's my role in this? That would include outlining our vision for how the data can be used, communicating that structure to all involved, and reinforcing our commitments and initiatives. So now let's take a look at our progress across the past two fiscal years. Starting with administrative services, they oversee our information technology, and this shows hours in response time for the IT requests, which has improved in financial year 2021. That would be the light blue on the screen. Administrative Services also tracks our full-time equivalent employee turnover rates, which were below 4% for financial year 20, but were below 2% for financial year 21. The city's historically had a low turnover rate of employees. Moving on to communications, we set several goals to be responsive to the community and ensure information is getting across to our residents. Returning media requests within a 90-minute timeframe was achieved 95% of the time in quarter one and 100% for the remainder of the year, and then 95% or higher in after-hours requests and holiday requests. And then getting out news releases once per week, we exceeded 100% in three quarters, and then 10 social media posts per week was exceeded throughout financial year 21. Moving on to community development, the department issued a steady level of building permits, and we also track the number of average days to review those permits. Little technical difficulty here. Would you mind advancing the slide? Thank you. So this metric tracks the full application submitted to the time the first comments are issued by staff. Quarter three shows an increase in time compared to financial year 20, which was essentially the result of being short-staffed, and quarter four shows the full staffing with a full-time building official and other efforts focused on ways to speed up the process. Our Economic Development Coordinator helped quite a few more businesses in financial year 21, with 106 in quarter one is the largest amount for that time period. Code enforcement remained consistent with cases throughout both financial year 20 and 21, trending up at the end of quarter four. Moving on to the Fire Department, as Chief Gray has noted in several of his previous presentations, the majority of our calls are medical for the Fire Department. We did make a switch in reporting software during this time from firehouse to emergency reporting, and the increased statistics on the slide are believed to be due to more people being out and about and being more active in 21 versus financial year 20. Our Finance Department keeps very busy throughout the year, working on processing accounts payable and receivable invoices. They had approximately 2,000 plus or minus each quarter for financial year 21. As well, the Finance Department has saved our taxpayers over $2.8 million through our bidding process for projects over $100,000, the bulk of that in quarter three of financial year 21. Moving on to Parks and Recreation, they play a very important role in facilitating our recreation, aquatic, and sport activities for our children and adult residents, and their programs saw the biggest return to larger numbers this past fiscal year, especially in their recreation programs. The Police Department tracks crime data. The systems have changed this last year with the transition to NIBR, the National Incident-Based Reporting System. They were previously using UCR, which is a Uniform Crime Reporting System. NIBR includes data that was not captured under UCR, so we're trying to compare the two as apples to oranges, so this is just calendar year 2021 data, and this is because of all the new classifications that are over and above what UCR dealt with, because it was only felonies, and NIBR includes felonies but also takes into account misdemeanors, and it's a much more accurate reflection of what's occurring in the community. And one of the most important metrics of all is our community's recognition as the safest city in Nevada by the National Council of Home Safety and Security. Public Works tracks the number of bids that are awarded each quarter, and as you can see in the green is the financial year 21 with six bids. They also track our city vehicles and equipment that are serviced each quarter, which tends to be cyclical, but it did show an increase in financial year 21 as business was getting back to normal from the pandemic. And they also stay very busy with our Public Works staff to work order requests that are generated by public inquiries and staff. You can see that the level of activity per quarter in the categories of administration, streets, building maintenance, and landscaping, and it does show an increase year over year in how busy they remain. The CCLIX Fix Program, an app which launched in March of 2020, has made reporting issues much easier for the public and staff to handle, especially for more urgent issues on the weekends and holidays. And one of the performance measures for the Utilities Department is avoiding violations in the areas of safe drinking water, water treatment, and landfill, and so I'm happy to report that the department had zero violations in both financial year 21 and the previous period. They also strive to minimize any customer complaints for services as well. So while these measures do track city performance through a pandemic that's remained ongoing, it does reflect staff's commitment to a high level of service to our residents. The excellent work and dedication of our employees is greatly appreciated from my office. Our staff always focuses on how to best serve our customers, the residents, and businesses of Boulder City, and I'm here to stand for any questions that you might have on the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I have a few items to mention here. One, I think having this in conjunction with the quarterly reviews of our strategic plan are essential, so I appreciate very much you putting this information together, all the department heads getting the information together. It lets the council know where we are, but it also lets the public know what their tax dollars are going towards. One of the things that stood out to me was our low turnover rate for employees during this period that has been called the Great Resignation. I think that's a benefit for our community, that the employees we have here have knowledge and experience over many years, so I think that is a benefit for us. The community development improvements in handling building permits and getting plans approved, I know they've put a lot of effort into that. I believe there's going to be a software upgrade coming for that. You know, folks have an expectation, and I think we're moving a lot closer to meeting that expectation now of getting turnaround on those. The existing, or excuse me, the Economic Development Coordinator, Mr. Fisdechun, you know, to have a community of 16,000 people that even has an economic development coordinator is pretty unusual, and I know from talking with the businesses, many of them now are very comfortable being able to contact Rafi, get information from him. He was certainly helpful to them, explaining the different benefit programs that were available to try and mitigate the impacts of COVID. I know he's out there in the community talking with people, Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance. You know, we don't have a huge opportunity here in Boulder City, but certainly he's been active in that as well, talking to them, looking for different opportunities for businesses. Police and Fire, to say this has been a trying year for both of those departments, or trying two years, I think is an understatement. The fact that we consistently maintain a low crime rate here in Boulder City, I think, speaks to the work that the police officers do in what I would call community policing. They're, they're out there, they're keeping an eye on things, they're responding quickly, and, you know, again, outstanding job year after year. The Fire Department, with all the work they've done during the pandemic with testing and vaccines, again, very much complement the work that they've been doing. The golf courses, you know, we're starting, or have seen where there's a break-even point on at least the operations. They still require a significant amount of tax dollars to support the courses in other ways, but we've, you know, I don't know if we can attribute it to the pandemic, but from the beginning of the pandemic, we saw the number of rounds starting to increase. I do note that for the municipal course, which not too long ago was, started to be managed by Mr. Shaper, that's where we've seen the largest number of rounds increase. So that is certainly a benefit and puts less of a burden on other areas of our budget. Parks and Rec, you know, folks certainly need the opportunities to get out, and it looks like Parks and Rec is providing those programs for them. Public Works, I know a couple of years ago when Mr. Littrell, the Public Works Director, had said, you know, if we can put some more people on staff, they would be able to do more work in-house, which would be a savings to the taxpayers. It looks like that that is paying off now, there being able to take on more projects and get those completed, again, a benefit to the taxpayers. Joe Stubez has recently been appointed as our Utility Director. There's certainly a lot of projects going on in that department right now. We literally have millions of dollars of projects that are underway now. I think his experience is going to be very helpful in that, because there's still a lot of work left to do on that. So overall, with pandemic being considered, all of that, I appreciate the work that the staff has done. It's been a trying time for everyone, and I think we see constant improvements even in light of that. Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that thank you very much, City Manager. Yeah, I'm just wanted to say that, um, thank you very much, city manager, uh, for the wonderful presentation. I'm very proud, uh, to be a Boulder City resident. Uh, we're safe, we're responsive and we're community oriented and, uh, that, that pleases me. I, you know, I looked at those numbers and, and to get through the end of a pandemic, hopefully, fingers crossed, soon, uh, but over the last two years to see every, all those numbers improving and I just wanted to say good job, good job to everybody, all the staff, everybody who's out there in the field, uh, taking care of business. So that's it. Um, again, good job.
Thank you. All right then, we will move to item number five and, uh, Mr. City Manager, this is your item as well.
Yes, so the item before you tonight is part of one of the provisions in, uh, my employment agreement to provide a report on any vacation plans. That's annually, uh, required thing. So I've put in the staff report, uh, five different dates that I know for sure that I'd like to, uh, use vacation for, uh, the coming year and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Uh, again, those, you know, uh, because of situations that had occurred in the recent past, uh, you know, this, this was something that was written into the employment agreements for the appointed officials. And again, I appreciate you keeping us up to date on your plans.
Thank you.
Item number six, uh, introduction of bill number 1913, An Ordnance of the City of Boulder City, Amending Boulder City Municipal Code. Uh, this is an item that I have requested, uh, so I will request, uh, reading of the title and waive the reading of the entire submission. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. Bill number 1913, An Ordnance of the City of Boulder City, Amending Boulder City Municipal Code, Title VII, Police Regulations, Chapter III, Animal Control, to amend section seven dash three dash two amendments and section seven dash three dash three, animals and chapter five, Public Land Use, Section Seven Dash Five Dash Seven, Prohibited Conduct in Public Parks, to clarify the prohibition of a, of at-large animals in certain areas within Boulder City. Bill number 1913 will be considered at the February 8th, 2022 City Council Meeting.
Thank you. Item number seven, Consideration of Bill Number 1911. Anyone wishing to introduce that bill?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a request for action, consideration of Bill Number 1911, it's an ordinance of the City of Boulder City, amending Title I, Chapter Nine, Financial Administration by amending section 198E to increase the fund balance ceiling of the risk management fund from prior year expenditures to 5% of capital assets of the governmental funds identified in the most recent annual financial comprehensive report. Um, I want to say a few comments on this because, um, the currently the fund ceiling is a 10% of general fund expenditures and that would generate approximately $3 million for this fund, but the, um, the risk management fund is, is, uh, probably needs additional funding because of all the possible areas that could be impacted by litigation in all areas of the general fund. You know, someone mentioned dog bites, I mean, things like that. If litigation came across and we had to pay claims, it would come out of this fund. So with that said, we felt that the basing it on general fund expenditures was not a proper calculation. So as we looked around, we determined that a more appropriate calculation would be 5% of total governmental fund assets. And that raised it to about an 8.3 million dollar amount. And several council members expressed concern about having such a high limit on funding that, that account. So, um, we did some research and many other cities have risk management funds and they're called different things everywhere. And we were having trouble determining what the fund ceiling was at most of these entities that have these risk management funds. Um, so we, we did call Pool Pack and spoke to Alan Kalt, who is our representative at Pool Pack. And actually he will be conducting the budget training in February. And he said, based on the Boulder City circumstances, and every city is different, that a 5% would be an optimal range and that is that 8.9. But he also said that we could reduce that and probably could be very comfortable with a 3%, which is an acceptable high-end limit instead of the, the 5%. And that would, that would set the fund ceiling at 5.3 million. So with that said, if, if a member of the council wishes to reduce that from the 5% to a 3%, we are very okay with that. So, um, I'm trying to think what else I want to say about this one. I mean, somebody makes a motion to do that, we can change that. Otherwise we could do it at the original because I said that is an optimum level, but we wouldn't necessarily fund it at that level. It would depend on what was going on with the city and our finances at the times. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you. I know that I was probably one of the council members that did ask about the change. It just seemed like that was a, um, significant increase in that area. And, um, I think myself personally at 3% currently and then see if our needs represent something higher, maybe later considering more, but, um, I myself think at 3%. I really appreciate your going out and checking that out and, um, giving us the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you. And I, this is just for my own clarification. So the current cap, uh, but based off of the, um, expenditures is, is around 3 million? Is that correct?
It was, yes.
Okay. And so then at the 5%, it would be the 8.9. And one more time, what did you say at 3%? What would that be at?
It'd be at 5.3. And what we felt too was basing a cap for risk management on expenditures was not really a logical way to do it. And basically people sue you on the value of your fixed assets. So that's where we changed it to the city's governmental fund assets.
Um, I, I definitely, uh, I, I agree with you there. I think it's, it's a, a more appropriate way to look at this and how we want to assess what our needs might be, um, and what, where our risk is. Um, you know, when we're talking about a cap, that means that at that point there can be no more funding, correct?
Right. Unless an ordinance came back, unless we brought it back and asked to raise that, that ceiling.
You know, in, in, to that regard, you know, I'm not scared of having a cap that really does protect us, something that, that looks at that 5% range. Of course, if we're all here and we're not quite all comfortable getting up to that, to that level, um, I think getting a little bit high, you know, the, the, starting at the 3% is fine and, and like was said, it can, can come up. Personally, my comfort level, I think 5% is appropriate. Um, and I think that it, again, it's not where we'll be right away. It just means that should we ever have that much, we'll never go over that. So that's, that's my thoughts. Um, but of course I'm, I'm open to everybody else to hear what they think.
Just one more comment too.
Thank you.
Any, any contributions from the, um, general fund going into this have to be approved by council. So we wouldn't just put the money in there each year. We would bring it back to you and, you know, tell you the reasoning for it. So it, it would never happen without council knowledge and approval at either level.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I, I have a question. This covers a pool pack premium from this fund or are those paid from the general fund?
I, I didn't understand the question.
I believe she's asking if, uh, the pool pack premium is paid from this risk management fund.
Yes, yes it is.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I, I do appreciate, you know, I had mentioned yesterday about, uh, talking to pool packs since, um, that's their business is to assess risk. Um, you know, I'm glad that they're comfortable at the 5%, uh, glad that also they say, well, 3% may be sufficient. Um, I'm okay with leaving it at 5%, but as we go through the budget process, we would identify how much might go into that fund. Uh, this fund does cover a fairly wide, uh, variety of things. We just mentioned the pool packed insurance premium, uh, litigation expenses, uh, self-independence for, uh, any claims that may be made against the city, although we do have pool pack, uh, they do not pay for everything. So I, I think setting it at that level, but then within the budget process, identifying how much, uh, to fund that, and that may vary from year to year. Uh, but having it at that amount, uh, I think we're also in a position with this budget because we were so prudent, uh, at the outset of the pandemic and being very conservative in the projects that we undertook, the amount of money we were spending and of course the amount of support that we received, uh, from the federal government. We are in a position to put, uh, enough money into this to cover any of the foreseeable risks at this time. So I would be okay with leaving it at that 5% value and then just deciding during the budget process, uh, how much of that cap to actually fund. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
I'll just add to having, keeping it at the 5% in my mind, it gives us the opportunity, should we see the need to do it without finding ourselves in the need and then needing to make adjustments there and not being able to, to be as maneuverable or flexible. One thing I've learned, you know, it's, it's a very slow-moving ship here at government and, you know, each time, you know, you have to make a change, it, it's a, it's part of the, it's a, it's a long process. And so, you know, personally I feel that, uh, yeah, I think 5% is, is a, is a, is a smart way to start off. And then if we go on years and years and we're never seeing those needs, then maybe we can reconsider, uh, the need for that cap. But I, I think it would be better, more prudent for us to start there and work our way down rather than to keep trying to incrementally go up. That's my personal thought.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Um, what besides pool pack is an annual fee that would come or an annual expense out of that?
Uh, the workers' comp insurance gets paid out of there. It's, uh, it could be used to pay some purse costs if those come up. Uh, any, any legal fees for litigation would come out of there. Uh, that, that wouldn't be a normal fee, but I mean, the, uh, the insurance premiums all get paid out of there consistently every year and that's over $400,000. So right off the top, that comes out each year.
Okay. Thank you.
And just for clarification too, um, these types of changes that we're considering this evening, uh, they can't be done the way that budget, uh, augmentations can be done through the year. Is that correct? We actually have to do these in anticipation of the coming fiscal year. Is that correct?
This action tonight would just be raising the amount we can put in the risk management fund and the, as, and you may recall that the funding mechanisms for the funds that were created two years ago are 1.1% of the lease revenues that come in. So a 1.1% which amounted to 200,000 goes into each fund throughout the year as those lease revenues come in. And the other, the other funding mechanism is when there are revenues in excess of budget at the end of the year, which is the augmentation we are doing later on in the agenda. We're recommending that, and that can be up to 10% going into these funds. So those are the two funding mechanisms.
Thank you. I, I, the, what I'm getting at or trying to get at, and I may not be correct, um, when we set these reserves, um, we cannot adjust those during a fiscal year, uh, according to state law, or is that incorrect? I, I, I'm not talking about the amount that actually goes in there. I'm talking about what the cap.
Oh, no, we can adjust that cap.
Even during the fiscal year?
Mm-hmm. That's what we're doing tonight.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on bill 1911?
Mayor, I move to approve bill number 1911 at the 5% of capital assets.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Item number eight, bill 1912.
Mayor and Council, may I just ask for one clarification? The motion was to pass the bill at the 5%. The bill specifies 5.5 and 6 tenths percent. So I just wanted to make sure council was.
The bill says 5%.
5 and 6 tenths.
That's item eight.
Yeah, the next one. It's the next one.
My apologies.
Too many numbers.
As long as it wasn't me who made the mistake, I'm okay with it.
Apologies.
All right. Item number eight, where we get to the 5.6%. Uh, bill number 1912, again, Ms. Pelletier?
Yes, this is consideration of a bill that was introduced at the last council meeting and it's, it's a similar type, uh, change like we did on this, the one you just approved, but it's a little bit different. I'll go into that. So this is a, um, consideration of bill number 1912, An Ordnance, City of Boulder City, amending Title I, Chapter Nine by amending section 194D to change the allocation of the lease revenues going to the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, which is VERF, from the 1 and 1 tenth percent, which is what it's set at for all these funds, to 5 and 6 tenths percent. And, um, the, the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund was established in 2019 and this fund is only used for the city governmental's purch, city government purchases of new and, new and replacement vehicles and large equipment and no other purpose. And when this fund was started, you know, once again, we were funding at a very, very conservative level, 1.1%, which amounted to 200,000 a year. And we created a VERF committee and that is made up of representatives from the whole city. And they get together and they reviewed all the vehicles and they graded them and came up with a replacement schedule. And that took a little while to do, but when they finally got that done, we need more than 200,000 a year, else this fund will never be able to afford all the vehicle and equipment needs of the city. And that amount can't, became more like a million dollars. So for example, in fiscal year 23, the committee said they needed 1.1 million for, for VERF and 24 is 900,870. So in total, over five years, they need 4.6 million and we won't get there by doing the 1.1% because that only gives us 200,000. So what this is requesting is that we change their allocation from lease revenues from 1.1% to 5.6% and that will generate a million dollars a year that hopefully we can buy what we need and also accumulate some fund balance over time so that this, this fund grows and then we can afford the really big purchases down the road. So we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Brit, uh, Jorgensen?
I was just wondering, sometimes when we turn over vehicles, um, we sell or, or do that, what happens to that money when that comes in? Does that go back into this fund?
I believe so.
Yes, it goes back.
Okay, yes, that's what I thought.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Um, you know, I for one am glad to see this. I've, I've asked since we've created this, uh, if we had enough in there because, you know, a couple of years ago, there was a replacement of a fire truck that was necessary and, uh, had to go out to the citizens for a vote on it. Um, I, I think that we can plan better than that. We know, uh, we have these expensive pieces of equipment, not only for the fire department, but Public Works also has some pieces of equipment that are very expensive, uh, to not include golf carts in this. Um, yes, golf carts are vehicles, but, uh, they're more, much more tied to the golf course for a recreation activity and not within something like this. Uh, so I certainly think that, uh, this increase is appropriate and will allow for the city to do the planning it needs to as vehicles age and need to be replaced. Any other questions or comments? I'll move for approval then of bill 1911.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Wait, did you just say 1911 or did you say 1912?
Excuse me, 1912, you're correct. Should be bill number 1912. Should be Bill number 1912.
Aye.
And let, let's go through, make it official. Councilmember Jorgensen, do you wish to?
I'll second it.
All right, and again, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're gonna have to separate these items out so that there, we don't have that many numbers. All right, item nine, uh, for possible action resolution 7388. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, our Administrative Services Director Bryce Bolt will be handling the item, uh, for the citywide copier printer lease agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you this evening a resolution that awards a 60-month lease agreement for printers, copiers, and multifunctional devices. In November of '21, the city put out a request for proposal and received nine proposals. After evaluation process, staff recommends UBO. Uh, the cost is 2,600 a month and a total agreement cost of about 156,000. Are there any questions I could answer?
Thank you. Questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7388?
I move to make, uh, accept Resolution number 7388.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, Mr. Bolt.
Thank you, sir.
Item number 10, Resolution 7389. Again, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, our Finance Director Diane Pelletier will be handling this item again. Um, just a little background, um, on the American Rescue Plan funding. Um, we are planning on having some public, uh, meetings on this in the future uh, when the COVID case count is lower. But I just wanted to make sure that the public knows we are planning to do that in the future. We'll be receiving the second half of the funds in August. So, um, there will be ample time for public input on that. But, uh, Diane?
Yes, um, item number 10 is, uh, for possible action resolution 7389. And that's approving recommended uses for the first distribution of the American Rescue Plan Act funding in the amount of 10,886,895. And the reason we're bringing this before you tonight is because I know there's been some money spent already out of these proceeds, and it's a very small amount. But we would like to use the pros- the money from this and put it back in those accounts that where the money was spent. And, um, in the staff report, we mentioned that, that, that this total first slice of the ARPA funds is 10,886. Well, of that, actually, $23,500 has been spent, and that was spent for, uh, vaccination drawing, test kits, PPE. And that amount can, could now be removed from here and put back in those accounts. But we really can't do that without some plan. So we figured we would bring back a, a preliminary plan that would definitely, we would definitely move this money out. And the, but the rest of this is just sort of proposals. And we did this with the CARES Act planning. We came forward with a plan like this, and that came back to the council many times to be changed and improved. So this is just the first step, and it's just the first slice of the ARPA funds. So we have anticipated ongoing costs that we also, um, expect we probably will spend in the, in the probably not so far future for test kits, 100,000, PPE, 20,000. And emergency aid was, uh, an item approved at the last council meeting to propose giving emergency aid, 50,000 to help people impacted by the COVID-19 at current time. And what we, uh, have done was that we've changed the wording in the resolution to make it reimbursable instead of a check at, um, the desire of emergency aid. And, um, even with everything we have allocated or proposed, there's still 620,000 left of this. That is, we, we have suggested possible uses, but we have not earmarked or suggested any uses. So this is just, like I said, a plan that we're bringing forth so we can start using some of this money and maybe have people start thinking about using it for the purposes we've put in here, because those are valid purposes based on the ARPA regulations. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I have to start out with a comment to disclose that I am the grant coordinator for emergency aid. I do not have a pecuniary interest, and I do not believe that it is necessary for me to abstain from voting.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Even though we will look at this and this is a rough draft, each of these items would have to come before us to be approved prior to being used?
I believe if they're in the plan, well, they would come to you, especially in the, in the utility portions. That would come to you in, in, um, agenda items, hiring firms to do the work, and it would say where the funding's coming from, and it would mention that it's coming from here. Uh, but with your, with your approval tonight, 23,500 will actually be reduced out of this, this balance. The rest of it, I guess we can, uh, inform the council if we have something that we are gonna be spending it on. But theoretically, you're kind of approving this preliminary plan.
Just wondering, as far as the water CIP, that's the wastewater CIP, that's the wastewater to go back to water the golf course? Is that?
I.
No.
Do you want to make a comment on that?
It's the approved CIP right now.
If, if you would come to the microphone, please.
It is the approved CIP right now. So I don't believe that's approved in there.
So the wastewater and water projects for '22 and '23 are the approved projects in '22 and the tentative approved water and wastewater projects for '23.
Any additional questions? Councilmember Jorgensen?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, you know, I think this is a great starting point for us, you know, that we have, um, the opportunity to make some much-needed improvements in our infrastructure with some of this money is, is huge. Obviously, uh, there, you know, there are constant costs in making sure that we keep our community safe, that, you know, our staff is safe, that everybody, you know, can, can get back and try to get back to as much as normal as we can. Um, you know, the only, the only thing that, you know, we're, you know, with the, I look at the golf course irrigation, and obviously, I'm, I'm a big proponent of making sure we're being very smart with our water conservation, you know, but it could be something where 10, 15 years down the line, we're really looking at where do we really need to be u- using our water and where do we need to start looking back at it? So, um, at this time, we're, we're not at that point yet. Um, but I just hope that, you know, as we're, you know, making these considerations that these things come to us, where we are seriously considering those, those aspects as well, so.
Absolutely. Another comment I want to make on this is just to, to, that what you said, you said you don't know where we're going, it could take 10 years. Well, this money has a, a window where if it's not spent by, at this time, I believe if it's not encumbered by 2024, we have to give it back. So it's not even considered our revenues right now, only upon spending it. So some of these projects are, are quite large, you know, especially the water and wastewater. And we know that it takes time to get these big projects moving. So that's another reason why this is coming to you now, even though, you know, no one's put the shovel in the ground yet on these. But at least they can start maybe planning for it and thinking about it so that we can, uh, start working towards spending some big dollars, because it's big dollars, you know?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to make a comment about the wastewater CIP and the golf course irrigation and the asterisk subject to change if SNWA project funding is available that by 2024, we will be on track to recycle 100% of our wastewater. If it means that our, our golf courses, parks, um, will be using treated effluent instead of groundwater or potable water for irrigation. So that's, um, I'm keeping my fingers crossed. That's it.
Thank you. And again, I, I think we should not get these projects mixed up. That, uh, what's here is not the further treatment of the wastewater. There were some improvements that had been identified at the wastewater facility that were needed. Um, but it does not have to do with the, uh, project that I had put forward of reusing our wastewater for irrigation. Again.
Okay, I was just responding to the fact that there was an asterisk after fiscal FY '22 and '23 wastewater and golf course irrigation that related to the sentence subject to change if SNWA project funding is available.
Right, the, the reason for that is because if SNWA decides not to fund it, then we probably should consider using this money to do it. So we wanted to, to put it out there to highlight it. But, you know, it's not like we're gonna run and start spending this money now, but we wanted to throw it out there as a possibility to keep in mind.
And, and again, I, I want to clarify which projects we are talking about. So the golf course irrigation project is something that has been talked about, uh, for some time now. And that has to do with possible turf removal at the course, reworking where the sprinklers are, putting in more efficient sprinklers, that type of thing. And again, the wastewater projects, I believe, are for, uh, not necessarily improvements, but more maintenance-type projects, uh, that are necessary there. Ms. Mannanen, is that?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Questions or comments? Um, you know, I, I'm hesitant, uh, to be honest with you, to commit or say we're committing the bulk of this. Now, I, I do believe there are some reporting things, uh, with this rescue plan money. Uh, we, as a city of less than 50,000, did not have the same requirements as others where they already had to submit a report on what they were intending the funds for. So when is our deadline?
So if you approve this tonight, when we report for the first time at the end, it'll be at the end of April of 2022. And we will report that 23 million, uh, 23 million, 23,500, 23,500 dollars has been removed from that and put for vaccination drawing, PPE, and test kits. That would be our only report at this time, because that would be the only money actually removed from the available funds. So that's when that will be done. We were trying to find the exact date. It's in April. I believe it's April, probably April 30th.
Okay. Um, but again, then, that's not, we don't have to report on the use of all the money. We just have to report on the use of the money that we know for certain
Mm-hmm.
um, is either been expended or will be expended.
That's what I believe at this, at this point.
All right. Um, and in, in looking at it, uh, the, the terms are, uh, costs incurred uh, is within that, uh, 2024 timeline, as I recall. But then the wording goes on to say includes funds are expended by December 31st of 2026. So if a contract is signed for a project, um, does that mean that the costs have been incurred?
I don't want to answer that one way or the other. I would definitely, that's why I'm saying we need to get this started. But then we, we need to get definitive answers on that. And that's why I'd rather have it started sooner rather than later. I, I don't know for certain.
I mean, my concern is, we, we do have this small amount of money for the vaccines, the PPE, uh, potential support for, uh, people through emergency aid who have been negatively impacted by COVID.
Yep.
Um, but the bulk of the money, yes, we have projects out there that we've, uh, talked about, we've anticipated, um, that also appear to fit within the rules for the rescue plan. But I don't know that we've considered other things, and yes, I understand we can change this. But I'm curious as to, do we have to commit these funds or, or make this determination tonight on the bulk of this money? Or is it possible to get a little better understanding of the uses for this and make a decision prior to April 30th or whenever, uh, the actual reporting needs to be done? Uh, that's a concern that I have is, you know, are, are we putting things out there and then we're gonna say, well, you know, we'll just change our minds later on if we come up with a better idea? Um, you know, get input from our residents as far as what they, uh, believe. And of course, the problem's going to be communicating to the public. There are restrictions on this money. It, it's not just, uh, money that we can use for any project. Uh, there are restrictions that the, uh, federal government has placed on this. Uh, I also had an opportunity to speak with, uh, the Director of the Nevada League of Cities today, and he was telling me about a program where a consultant has been retained by the state. And their, uh, purpose is to collect all of the projects that cities, counties, the state are anticipating for the use of this money and see how they fit together. So there may be situations where an agency like SNWA may contribute, uh, to some of these projects, or the state may contribute, or the county may contribute. So I, I'm concerned that we're moving a little too quickly, uh, on this, and I don't know that that's a requirement at this time. I, I do understand for the money for the vaccines and the PPE and the COVID support through emergency aid, um, those things we are making a commitment for or should. Um, but that's a relatively small amount here. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, the, the funds do not have to be obligated until December 31st, 2024, and then they would have to be, they wouldn't be subject to recapture or return until Dec- December 31st, 2026.
So committed would be, we sign a contract for a project?
Or pass a resolution showing exact uses, uh, committing those funds. Um, also, any purchases or any spending of this money over 150,000 dollars would come before the council for your approval on each expenditure. So, um, any, any projects would come before you.
Well, again, I guess my concern is, on this resolution, 7389, um, can we narrow it, uh, to where we are just making the approvals on the amounts we need? You know, that seems to be the way we'd handled the CARES Act. Uh, there was some amount of money always that we knew the city had already incurred for things like overtime costs and all of that. So there was a portion of that money, um, that was there that we knew had already had expenses incurred for. But as we saw needs for, uh, business support, uh, community support, resident support, we reduced the amount, uh, that was being held for compensating the city for its expenses. So I'm just wondering if we can't use a model like that where we commit to the items that we know for certain right now? Uh, as I recall, before, there were at least three resolutions where we had to, uh, commit additional funds, and we did that as needed. Uh, like I say, I, I just feel we're a little too early in this process.
Um, I do have a comment. Um, we're approving recommended uses. And I, uh, we are identifying this as the beginning of the process, correct? I mean, my approving recommended uses does not mean we're putting a rubber stamp on those uses. But is it helpful, um, and this is to, um, our finance director or city manager, is it helpful in terms of long-term planning? Have any idea where this money would be best attributed at this point?
I believe it helps.
Both? So we're, we're not approving the projects, we're approving a list of recommendations?
Well, I, I, again, that, that's my hesitation, you know? With the CARES Act money, it was, it was not this type of model that was being used. Uh, there were funds that were known, uh, could be used to reimburse the city uh, for things like overtime costs. In this case, we're actually identifying actual projects, uh, that we're saying we're going to, uh, spend this money on. And I just think we're too early in that process. And what we should do is commit the funds that we know need to be committed uh, and take a little longer here to identify exactly what. exactly what projects this money can be used for. I appreciate staff coming up with these suggestions, but this is a different situation where rather than just saying, you know, we have a pool of money that we know we can use to reimburse the city, which fortunately turned out really not to be a dire need of the city, so we were able to commit those funds to businesses and individuals. This seems to be a different situation where we're saying, we're gonna do these projects and we're gonna commit this money. Yes, I understand we can come back later and say no, but then what's the point of doing it now? I mean, if we don't have a contract that we're ready to sign to do these projects, why do it now? Mr. City Manager?
I think we'd feel comfortable if we kept the three first-whereas clauses in the, in the resolution. One of the reasons would be that buying test kits, we have had a lot of trouble getting tests, so that would be great to have the flexibility to take the funds out of the rescue dollars. And so then it's not affecting the fire department's budget or other budgets. And then, of course, any other PPE needs and the money to emergency aid, and then we can come up with a more comprehensive plan with perhaps accounting for all of the dollars, and we can take a little more time, get you more, more familiar with the different projects and make you feel more comfortable if that would be best.
And I think that, you know, we, we're not out of the pandemic, so we don't know for certain yet. Yes, you have left, I believe it's over six hundred thousand.
Well, there's also ten million more coming in August, so.
Later in the year, yeah, I understand. Madam City Attorney, you had something?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the need to clarify where some of this money needs to be spent, especially where funds have already been committed, such as the vaccination drawing and for PPE and testing. However, with the, the way the resolution is written in the attachment, I do believe if, if significant removals were going to be made, it may be best, unless there's a time-sensitive reason in which this plan needs to be approved for some of the costs, it would be better to just bring, if the, if the, all of the council wishes to, or I should say, the majority of the council wishes to bring, talk about the capital improvement projects at a later time, it may be best to not act on this resolution tonight and instead bring the entire thing back so we can be more clear as to what is being spent and what, what's not. Just for the public reasons, it would be difficult to make changes, significant changes during the meeting.
Ms. Pelletier, are we under, you know, some financial requirement here? I know you've identified costs that have actually been spent already.
Yes, and we wanted to move those costs out of this, out of this pot of money and put it where it was spent. That was the main reason why we brought it tonight, because, you know, we're doing several things that are all related to the finances of the city, and we thought this was an appropriate time to bring that forward. But, I mean, it's, I was just trying to do, you know, a first step. So I guess we can put it off and do it later on.
Would, would the next meeting, next council meeting, the first meeting in February, would that provide enough time?
I don't know if we'd have any additional information. I mean, it's the projects.
Well, I, I think, again, if, if there's an appetite to say we need to rework this so that that money is not committed, we're not making that commitment until we get a better understanding of potential uses of it. If we want to come to that conclusion tonight and bring the resolution back for only those items that we have some certainty about at this time.
We could do that, but we were trying to avoid doing that. But if that's the only way we can do it, we could do that.
Well, again, I, well, Mr. City Manager, any, any thoughts on that?
I just wanted to ask a question of Diane. Does that affect the distribution to emergency aid?
Well, if, yes. Yeah, well, would, but they want reimbursement, so they probably wouldn't be submitting anything for a little while. It would be on a reimbursement basis, so it probably wouldn't impact them.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
So I just want to make sure that the clarification is that by 2024 it has to be committed, but by '26 it has to be spent.
Mm-hmm. That's my understanding.
Okay, so here's, I guess, my question. Say that we put off projects or whatever, and we commit in '24, and it's not finished, does that mean then it's not spent and we lose it, and we end up with those committed projects that we then in turn have to fund and then give that money back? That's just my question.
And that's my question, too, because, you know, that's, that's why I feel the sooner we actually start making decisions and, and, you know, as we all know, big projects do not happen quickly. They take time. So that was why I was trying to be a little proactive here, but I understand the concerns. I mean, we can, we can not vote on it tonight and bring it back later. I just not sure. I guess unless you would look at what you've approved tentatively in the water and wastewater CIP, that would tell you the projects that we were addressing as a, as a potential use.
Well, I appreciate that, and those projects have been in the utility CIP for some time now. I mean, they, they're identified projects. My concern is making that commitment now without having a full understanding of other possible uses for that money, because those projects are already covered by money that's been identified within the utility capital improvement fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And it would free up money in the utility funds to be used for other things.
Right.
So that's, that's what I meant by for financial planning. You know, if there was a commitment to that, that would definitely help the utilities be able to plan better because they'd know that they, if they can get started on these projects, then they, and got them completed, they could use these funds and not have to use the fund balances for wastewater.
Once that, once that happens, we're committed because it's an enterprise fund. Any funds that are freed up within the utility fund would have to stay in the utility.
Of course.
Yeah. So we could revive things like the pipeline to nowhere if we had lots of money to use or something.
You could.
I'm joking, but.
Okay.
Again, I, I don't think since we have over two and a half years to make these commitments, that a two-week thought process is too much, but that, that would be my position. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. First of all, I disagree putting it off. I think strategic planning is very important. And when you're talking about money like that and the fact that there are some pretty strict restrictions on how this money is used, and we have an opportunity to say this right now seems to be the best way to allocate those funds going forward, and the fact that any of those expenditures can come back to the council for approval, I, I think it's best to continue a strategic direction, knowing that at some point we could change that. At some point, we could say, yes, this, this is a different way to go. But I think between our finance director and our city manager, who have probably read in depth on the requirements and what the money can be used for, that this is the right direction right now. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. And, and again, I think my point is, since we're the ones making the decision, we don't have the information yet, and that waiting till our next meeting, when we have a time horizon of more than two and a half years, would be significant. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I think for, for me, I, I think it's pretty obvious, or it at least seems to me that everybody isn't at least in agreeance with, you know, obviously there's money that's already been spent, but then there's the ongoing costs that were also, that are obviously that money's going to be spent. It seems that everybody's at least in agreeance that, yes, that money has to go there. You know, when it comes to looking at the, the broader picture, the big infrastructure projects, obviously, like I said before, it's great that we might have the opportunity to do this, but at the same time, you know, we as a body haven't even really, you know, sometimes when we have these sorts of things, we maybe have like a workshop where we talk a little bit more in depth. You know, one of the eligible uses here I see is broadband infrastructure. That's always something that I've been interested in for our community, because I hear, I do hear from people who do have access, internet access, it can be an issue for them. So I'm not, but I'm not sure if that is just something that I'm hearing from a small subset of the community, whether or not it has been considered by staff yet at this point. So there are a number of areas that we can look at here. So I'm like, I'm, I'm not sure if it would be more appropriate for us to have this come back to us, approve of the immediate expenditures that we're talking about, and then maybe have a workshop where all of us can, can talk maybe about, you know, what are the projects that we, that we want to consider, what, what has been reviewed, what hasn't been reviewed, what areas do we want to look forward in, you know, just so that we're not, because it can be kind of hard when we say, yeah, let's go wastewater CIP, you know, wastewater CIP, water CIP. That's kind of very nebulous in what we're saying, you know. And, and it's not that I would say we're not gonna do that, because for all I know, it could be the most important thing that we need to do. But when it's just listed like that, it might then be hard to say, well, actually, we, now we have this better, this other idea, and then there's already been thought processes that they're gonna go this way, but now we're gonna go this way. And, you know, that can also start to get problematic. So I'm not sure if that's a better solution. So, but that's, those are my comments.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, I think, again, you know, Madam City Attorney has already indicated that that wouldn't be possible tonight because of the wording that we have before us this evening, but could be brought back in a couple of weeks at our next meeting.
Yes, if there are significant, excuse me, if there are significant changes that the majority of council wants to make to the resolution and projects, respective projects, I would recommend not acting. That said, this could be approved and, and those, and later changed. This could be approved today and also later amended, but those are the two options essentially. If there are, if there are more options the council would like to see before making a decision, then that can happen as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
I was just gonna say that I would feel really a lot more comfortable if we had a workshop. I know that we initially had one when the money came out and we talked about it, but with specific projects, it would give us a chance to ask more questions and to go into more detail instead of doing that up here. And I 100% agree that I see what we've spent it on and what I think, when I see the line going around the fire station, we will still continue to spend it on, that I would feel completely comfortable with if you could come back in two weeks with an amended version of this stating that that's what you are asking for, that that, that could be approved while we quickly schedule a workshop, because I would hate to see us leave money in the coffers that we didn't use and then gets given back.
So just, just bring back the spent monies and the proposed?
And the proposed, I think it's for, yeah, hundred and seventy.
Hundred and seventy, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution seventy-three eighty-nine as proposed? All right, motion fails then, or excuse me, there is no motion, so the resolution is not accepted. Again, I, I think we've been able to give you a better idea of what we're looking for. You know, I think we can certainly get the process started in a couple of weeks, and then, again, we can decide how to spend a lot of money.
Mayor, I think, Mayor and Council, sorry to interrupt. I do think it might be cleaner, since, since the council wishes to bring this back in two weeks, to, I think the proper motion might be to hold it in abeyance till February eighth.
Very well. I will make a motion to hold Resolution number seventy-three eighty-nine in abeyance until the first meeting in February.
I'll second that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you for the clarification, Madam City Attorney and Ms. Pelletier. Again, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. We just need to think a little longer, I think, but not much longer, but a little longer. All right, that brings us to item number eleven for possible action matters pertaining to the 2022 land management process. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Michael Mays, our community development director, will walk you through the land management process, including the public hearing and resolution.
And just so that I can put the word in your head, it's not the land management plan, but we'll be counting.
Thank you so very much, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. As you consider Resolution seventy-three ninety this evening, this is the final step in the annual process for the land management process for the community to consider the potential addition of city-owned property to the land management process list for future disposition, whether it's for sale or lease of that property. This process was put in place over twenty years ago as an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the city's consideration of the disposition of city-owned land. And as you will recall, last fall, the city posted a notification in newspaper, opening up the process, asking for applications. Several applications were presented to the city council last fall. The city council authorized moving forward with two of those applications, and those applications went before the planning commission for consideration and are back here before you for consideration this evening. As you can see on the screen, this is the list of the existing properties that are on the land management process list. And so what you would be considering with this resolution is adding two more properties to that list. In conjunction to the list, we have on the screen, also on the city's website, maps that show where these properties are located within the community. And again, these are the existing parcels that are on that list. And for your consideration this evening are the addition of two more. And the first on the screen is approximately point nine acres. This is Six Fifty-One Adams. This is the former Boys and Girls Club, directly adjacent to the Boulder City Library. The library is requesting that this parcel be listed as a government use on the list. And as you recall, it had been previously placed on the list for residential uses several years ago. In addition to that, the second item for your consideration is an application by Delmar Energy Storage LLC. They're looking at thirty-eight point five acres. This is located at five ninety Eldorado Valley Drive, and they're requesting that this be added to the land management process list for utility uses. They're interested in battery storage at this location. It is surrounded by existing solar projects currently. And as the city manager noted, there's a required public hearing as part of this process, and I can answer any questions regarding these applications.
Thank you. At this time, then, if there's anyone who wants to clarify anything with Mr. Mays, that would be the time to do it. But regarding any opinions on this, we should probably wait for that until after the public hearing. So any questions for clarification from Mr. Mays? Councilmember Jorgensen?
Just a clarification for me, that the part that the Delmar Energy is asking for, is that the one that was, it's the one that was owned by the university or the, that was given to them? Is it that section of land?
It's not given. It's still city-owned property, but there was a lease for them, and they have been in negotiations with Delmar to allow Delmar to proceed with the battery storage.
Okay, so that's why they don't own that little piece or have that piece to lease?
Right, yeah, it's city-owned property.
Yeah, and I guess the, the phrase we normally use, UNLV had an option on that land, but I don't know that they- land, but I don't know that there were, there was ever any lease money generated, they just had the option on it.
That's a correct clarification, yes. They never moved forward with utilization of the land.
Okay. Any other questions for clarification? All right, we will open the public hearing then. If there's anyone present in chambers who would like to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll go to any phone calls. If anyone would like to call in, this is a public hearing regarding a resolution for adoption or inclusion of parcels within the land management process. The number to call is 702-589-9629. Again, this is a public hearing regarding the land management process. Anyone wishing to make comment? The phone number 702-589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received with regard to this item?
No emails were received, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, hearing no one for public comment, we will close the public comment period. Any questions or comments from council members regarding this item?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that it excites me to see two such honorable requests from both expanding the options for the library and battery storage for renewable energy. I support both of those. I do have a question. When, when Track 350, this has to do with the land management process, when Track 350 actually gets sold, does it automatically come off, or does it have to be like officially removed?
So the intent with the land management process list is to be able to represent the potential utilization of city-owned land, either for sale or for lease. If the property is sold, then it would be removed from the list.
Okay, so it just happens?
It, it does, correct. But if there is no activity after three years, it comes back to the City Council to consider whether to keep that parcel on the list.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's all I needed to know.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7390?
I move to accept Resolution Number 7390.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Mr. Mays, thank you. And I did not hear the word plan, so good job.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a 10-minute recess prior to moving on to item number 12 and return at 6:45. Thank you. All right, we will resume, call the meeting back into session. And we are now on item number 12 for possible action, Resolution 7391. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Diane Pelletier, our Finance Director, will be handling this first augmentation of the 2022 General Fund budget.
Okay. So they didn't even hear that comment. Okay, that's fine. Okay, item number 12 is for possible action, Resolution 7391. It's a resolution of the City of Boulder City, augmenting the City of Boulder City's fiscal year 2022 budget, which is this year's budget. Funding source, it's audit, it's augmenting the, this Boulder City current year budget for funding sources and expenditures. And the City Council approved the 22 budget on May 25, 2021. And the city's financial, comprehensive financial audit was completed in November of 2021, and that was for year ending June 30, 2021. So it's for last year. I'm going to try to take this slow, because it's kind of a hard concept to gather, but the general fund beginning balance after that annual, we closed our books and we, we received the final audit of everything. The general fund, fund balance was $7,182,000 higher than expected, allowing this amount to be used in the fiscal year 2022 augmentation, not 2021. There's a typo in the staff report. But earlier, when, when you approved the two ordinances changing some situations for the Risk Management Fund and for the VERF, I mentioned at that time that the funding mechanisms is 1.1% of lease revenues. And if there are greater than budgeted revenues, then those monies from the previous year could be used to help fund those funds. So that's what this item is doing tonight. It's saying, we had excess revenues at the end of fiscal year 2021 that we can now use to augment this year's budget and put more funding in those special funds that we created. So there are five funds that were created and, oops, we're not recommending that we put money in the Revenue Stabilization Fund and the Compensated Absence Fund, because those funds are close to being fully funded. So we're not asking for any augmentation to include monies being moved to those funds. So what we're asking is transferring money to the Vehicle Equipment and Replacement Fund, the VERF, the Risk Management Fund, and the Extraordinary Maintenance Fund. And this would be at the 10%, which is part of the ordinance that was approved when we created these funds. But in addition to all that, and that's where this gets a little bit complicated, in addition to all that, there's been a, another ordinance that was adopted by council and that's separate from these funds. But I'm trying to find where it is on here. I believe it was May of 2020, let me find it, May of 2021, there was another ordinance approved by the council, and it's regarding the Swimming Pool Recreation Project. So I believe several members were on that pool committee, and they adopted the swimming pool recreational project financing plan. And what this was, was trying to find a way to raise enough funds to replace the pool in Broadbent, Broadbent Park by not raising taxes. So we came up with a, a plan, and step, milestone four of that plan is to pass an ordinance to capture excess revenue over expenditures after taking care of any other needs, which were these other funds, for the, for a four-year period, and using that money as part of the savings to replace the pool in Broadbent Park. So to date, we had one year, we had some money we could put in there, it was $788,000. But I know I'm going to talk about this in the five-year plan, but I guess I would like to just mention what created the large surplus for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. And I'll mention that again later, but because of this augmentation, I feel like it should be noted how we ended up with so much money, especially during a pandemic. But we had what I call the perfect storm of revenues. So one of the things that happened during fiscal year 2021 was we received a townsite solar permit, which was, it's a one-time fee, it was $1,080,000. We also received a one-time option payment, and it was for $3,075,000. And this payment, the total of both of those was $4 million. So that was not budgeted. We did not count on that. And the little history on this, I was told that this, this particular lease was, the option was negotiated back in 2011 during a very bad time for Boulder City, where the fund balance was in dire straits. And they were hoping that this would get exercised quickly. And obviously, it didn't. It took till 2021, so it took 10 years. But fortunately for us, it happened at a time when we needed it too. So that's a big chunk of this money. In addition to that money, there was also, at the time during the pandemic, we were told we had, well, told Applied Analytics was hired by the state of Nevada, and they came up with our projections that we could use in, in the budget. So they were 40% reductions in estimated revenues. And it was, the C-Tax ended up $4,687,000, which was higher than the COVID projections. We also received CARES Act funding, $1,005,000. So the total there is $10,351,196. So that's what created a big spike in revenues, where a lot of other people, you know, were not, were not so fortunate. But we had, I call it a perfect storm of revenues that happened. So that created this rather large amount of money, but because of the wording in those ordinances, we can take 10% of that money and propose moving it to these funds, which will help them become better funded and, you know, available for the city use. And also will probably reduce the need to put money in there in the future. So with that said, this augmentation is asking that the Risk Management Fund get $1,360,000, which is 10%. The Extraordinary Maintenance Fund receive $1,360,000. The Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund receive $1,360,000. And the last piece of that is related to the Recreation Pool Project, which is separate from those ordinances, and they don't have a cap. We're just saying that if there is excess funds, that we allocate that to that project. And by, and as you can see by the poster, the blue section is what we were hoping to raise over about a four-year period. And when this almost puts us to where we need to be, so there probably will be minimal attempts to put any more money for the excess revenues once this is approved. So the total amount of the augmentation is $7,182,422. And I hope I've explained that pretty well, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. I know maybe for some people, it's hard to get a little excited about numbers and, you know, essentially, you know, what are savings funds and stuff like that. But I, I think what, for me, what is most exciting is seeing this amount of money that we can put towards our pool. I mean, it was a, a key part of this, the strategy that we have, that, you know, one part of it being the ordinance that was passed by, with voter approval, or not, not ordinance, but this ordinance that we passed also, that all of this is going towards, you know, that greater goal, towards getting a new pool at some point without that burden on the taxpayer. So I think that's, you know, for me, that's just a, a big win for, for everyone here in Boulder City. So thank, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Jorgensen?
I would like to comment that I want to give the Finance Department kudos for being able to present that. I mean, I'm sitting here on a, on my computer and with a phone, and to be able to follow along and know exactly where that money's coming from and moving towards. And the financial transparency that comes from these kinds of presentations are remarkable. And I think it's great. I think it's great that we could very possibly be able to fund the pool with very little bond issue, if any, and to know that our, our funds, our buckets are going to be funded close to what they should be. So good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
So just for my clarification, where it says excess revenue, that does not mean, because you said in the future, you'd put very little than into it of excess, excess revenue. But that doesn't mean that that's how much we can put in, right? So if we put more at a later date that exceeded that with that less, and then like as Claudia just said, the bond that we had to take out at the end.
Yes, the council could do that, but there's not, there's not a guarantee that there will be excess revenues in any given year. Like, like I mentioned, when I was explaining this, this is just a, what I call a perfect revenue storm. It, I've never seen it happen in my career to this extent, and especially during such a dire time, it's, you know, pretty exciting that we have the opportunity to do that and, and help fund all these special funds that the city has created to keep Boulder City stable in difficult times. So it's, it's actually a very, very lucky, I'll, I'll call it lucky for the city to have, have had this good fortune.
Anyone else? Well, I'm gonna, I have a different perspective on, on some of this. You know, one, we always want to have, or should always hope to have, some money left over in the general fund at the end of each year. You know, obviously, this is a significant amount of money that's left over. And yes, we did receive the $4 million lump sum payment on the Townsite Project. That accounts for quite a bit of it. With regard to the pool, there was never a bond ever proposed for the pool project that was accepted by the, the City Council. That was the point of this and the plan that you had come up with, Ms. Pelletier, that we would not have to take on any debt for the city. The potential cost of the pool had been estimated during the process that the Ad-Hoc Committee had been looking at it. And it was going to be somewhere probably just north of 20 million. And then there were inflation factors to consider and that sort of thing. Part of the financing plan that you had proposed then was the sale of the land on Track 350, the approval by voters to use up to $7 million from the Capital Improvement Fund. We have a very generous anonymous donor who provided $1.3 million to the city. And then if needed, we would take unused money at the end of each fiscal year from the general fund and also put it for, towards that project. And as I recall, the amount was discussed, I don't know whether it's in the resolution, but it was discussed, to not exceed $1 million.
The, the segment of the resolution is part of the staff report? It does not give, put an upper limit on it?
I'm just giving you my recollection of what the estimate was at that time. The, the big factor is the sale of land known as Track 350, the land around Boulder Creek Golf Course. We didn't know, there had been no appraisal on that land, so we did not know how much money would be coming in from that. And since that is the bulk of it, the pool project really can't get started until we know we have that money in the bank. And we're not still in a position to know when that's going to- And we're not still in a position to know when that's going to happen, because we don't know how this takedown and, you know, financing, whether it's going to be in three parts or how it's going to be done. We've yet to arrive at a sales agreement with the developer for that land. There has been an RFP that's been accepted, but we're still awaiting the appraisal process. However, it looks like the total revenue from that's going to be somewhere around 29 million. I believe that's what the estimated value of that land has been. So we're already well in excess of what the projected cost of the pool replacement would be without using CIP funds, without using the $7 million, or excuse me, the leftover general fund money. My concern is that if we look at 29 million from the sale of the land, 7 million from CIP, that puts us at 36 million, the 1.3 million from the anonymous donor, and now what would be approximately $4 million out of the general fund, all of a sudden, we're over $40 million. And the voters had said they do not want a pool like that here in Boulder City, that they don't feel that's appropriate.
I believe they voted against a bond sale to finance a pool of that amount.
I'm explaining to you, I know what the ballot question was. The ballot question was whether the city should increase property taxes to pay for it. I'm explaining to you what was said to me by hundreds of voters during that election. They thought that that project was inappropriate for Boulder City. They thought $40 million for any municipal pool was a joke, and they weren't about to see their taxes increased to have it done. So for us now, to say, we're going to keep pushing money into that, we can't start the project until we get the bulk of the money, which comes from the sale of Track 350. So to keep pushing money in there, and then all of a sudden say, hey, folks, we know, we told you we were going to give you an appropriate-sized pool, but look at all the money we have. Meanwhile, there are other projects that go unfunded. So I have a very serious concern about pushing $3 million that does not appear to be warranted into this fund for the pool, because the pool, the other financing sources for it now have become clear to the point where it appears we have plenty of money, but the one major component is the sale of that land, and we can't start the project until the land sells. But once it does, that's probably going to provide us a sufficient amount of money for the pool project that the voters here said, yep, yep, we'll go ahead and we'll give you the CIP, and we'll approve the land sale, and, and you're good to go. So I'm very hesitant about this. I think there are far better uses for this money at this time, and to say, well, we'll never have this opportunity again, I, I disagree with that, because at the end of each year, we've always had money left over in the general fund. So I, I have a problem with that one component of this. As far as the funding for those other accounts, I, I think that's appropriate and a, and a good use of that money. But the pool, the money's already there, there's no bonding, there never was any bonding involved in it, because the voters weren't going to approve that.
Well, well, at the time, there was a final component of a possible midterm bond that would, that would be under the, it would be a private placement.
If, if we were going to have a shortfall.
Yes.
Well, there is no indication there's going to be a shortfall.
Not at this time, there's no indication. And, and then if, if the, there's going to be a, I'm not sure if I'm using the right term, I want to say engineering that would come back. Next year, they're going to do an actual estimate of what the pool cost is, and if that, I don't know what it's going to be with inflation, but I mean, at that point, if, if the council, you know, says they want a pool of X amount of dollars, this money would not disappear, it would stay in the construction acquisition improvement fund and could be used for other things. But if we don't move it there tonight, then we lose that opportunity.
Again, I, I, the money that's already been committed to the pool project, and this money can certainly go elsewhere. Okay, there, there is no demand for it to be placed where you're proposing to place it. The pool project, you know, it, well, okay, I, I've made my point. I think this is the wrong thing to do, that it's an inappropriate place to put this money, and that the residents of Boulder City, if this does happen this way, have been misled once again, and that should not happen. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Adams?
For further clarification, you said, should this money get put into that special construction pool fund that we have, or account? And we end up with more money basically than what the cost of the pool is. What happens with this money?
It stays in the acquisition and improvement.
Okay.
Actually, it's called the extraordinary, extraordinary maintenance fund, so it would just stay in there and would be used for other purposes.
Could be used for other purposes. You know, quite frankly, I, I, I disagree with, with that assessment that, that the voters were misled in any way. We put this in place prior to that vote. It was very, I think, I think we were very transparent throughout the entire process of what this would look like, what the steps we're going to take. You know, if we have more money at the end of the day, I think that's great. I think that's a little bit wishful thinking. I think, you know, $20 million pool would be great, but I don't think that we can say two years, three years down, as we watch inflation go through the roof on prices on things, and say, well, it doesn't matter what the costs are, it just has to be at 20 million or less, and then we don't get the pool that we were actually talking about. I think that would be more akin to misleading the public than to just simply, you know, say, no, we said 20 million and nothing, not a dollar over. I think it would be more financially prudent for us, because it is clear that we need a, a new pool, a new facility. I don't think we need the, everybody called it the Taj Mahal or the Taj Mahal Pool or whatever, you know, things. I, I agree that we don't need that, and I don't think that we should move forward with something like that, but that's, that's not what this is. This is, we have money that can be put aside, it is available for it. I think it puts us where we need to be. And if it's left over, and we have this money left over to spend, it can go towards other projects where things are necessary. So I personally, I think this is, I think this is wise for us to do, because the, I think the voters are pretty clear. They want a new pool, so.
I, I would just like to respond. I, I think Councilmember Adams has mischaracterized what I've said. I did not say that the pool was going to be $20 million. I think that that was not what had come out of the ad hoc committee. I think detailing this money as being tagged for the pool now is unnecessary. You've said yourself, Ms. Pelletier, that this is going into a fund. Then let it go into the fund, and don't say that it's for the pool if, oh, well, the money's just going to stay there. And again, I believe, and, and I don't need to have my remarks mischaracterized or exaggerated, I know what the voters told me, who were very hesitant to vote for the CIP money to go forward with that project, because of the fear that they had, that we were going to wind up with something that was totally beyond what the needs of Boulder City had. Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. I believe that Pelletier brought us exactly what it is we asked for in terms of distribution into the special funds, and that there, there has been presented to us a roadmap to funding the pool. And the fact that right now, we have those excess funds to cover a portion, a significant portion of that piece. So we, we have an amount there. I don't believe that, first of all, I think inflation is going to be very high, and I also think that if we have that, those funds right now, and they can be earmarked, and yet down the line, if we have more than we need, we can keep it in that fund, but it doesn't have to be used for the pool. I think it's not prudent to just say, let's put it somewhere else for now, and if we need it later, we will. I think we, we've got that, those funds right now, we can earmark it for that, and then down the road, if there's a change in that, we can make that change in that fund. I, I agree with Councilman Adams.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes, I was just wondering, what kind of projects would be, say, we do have an excess at the end in there, what kind of projects would be, a project that you could use those funds for?
Any general fund capital improvement project?
Okay, so very general, not like we're getting so specific. So it, it would never be money lost. It would still be our money. If we didn't reach the funding amount that we have for the pool that we build, that's still our money to use for the areas that we need to use them. I think I have to agree in that we have seen in the last year a very direct change in how far our money goes. There's a lot of inflation and a lot of services, there are a lot of products. I, I'd rather have more and be able to cover less if necessary. That doesn't mean we have to have a $49 million pool if you have that in there. It just means you have the money to do the project, so we don't charge the taxpayers, which is what they didn't want. They don't want it to come out of their taxes. So we don't have to take a bond out. That, that this is a prudent way to fund a pool ahead of time as opposed to incur debt for it.
Thank you. And again, I would point out that there is a ballot question in place regarding the sale of Track 350 land, that if that money were not needed, if the pool were to come in, in the range that was predicted to occur even with inflation, that, that money cannot be used elsewhere. Is that correct or incorrect?
It would have to go back to the voters.
Right. So there would need to be another ballot question for any of that money. And then the CIP money, that, once again, that's a voter-approved amount of money.
It's the acquisition and improvement fund or the extraordinary maintenance fund? It's just a component of...
No, no, I'm talking about the approval by the voters for the $7 million.
Yes, there's, there's a capital improvement fund that's voter-approved, and the, and the voters did approve a $7 million amount that could be used for the pool at the last election.
So those two figures are $35 million then, if the 29 million for the Boulder Creek land is accurate. That money cannot just simply be used for other projects. The voters have encumbered that money for us because we asked them to do that.
The $7 million actually will stay in the CIP fund until it's spent, and then we take it out, but up to $7 million of it can be used for the pool, and then the...
Again, the point I'm trying to make is that this money is not just, well, we'll just have this big pot of money, and we'll use as much as we want, and then we can use it for other things. The, the major portion of this is the land sale, and that money has been identified by the voters and would require something to go back. There is, of that, there is 2.9 million or 10% that has been designated for public safety. Okay? Member Jorgensen?
No, that's what I was going to say, is that I thought a percentage of it was taken out for public safety, so the whole amount.
10%, yes. Any other questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution 7391?
I move to approve Resolution number 7391.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I am voting nay, simply because of the way this has been presented. Vote then will be four to one to carry the motion. We'll move to item number 13, Resolution 7392. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Diane, again, for the second augmentation.
Yes, Resolution 7392 is to augment the city of Boulder City's fiscal year 2022 more cops and crime prevention budget, funding sources, and expenditures. And the city, the city council approved the fiscal year 22 budget on May 25, 2021. And when the financial audit was complete of our financial records, it was determined that the more cops had additional funding than budget of 317,000, and crime prevention had 60,000. So we would like to use these funds to increase the budget, the current year budget of those two funds, because their expenditures, if we don't do this augmentation, will exceed budget. And a little background on that is budgeted expenditures for more cops will be increased by 50,000 in salaries, 20,000 in benefits, and 60,000 in services and supplies. The need for the, for the increased budget is that a frozen position needed to be filled faster than scheduled due to COVID. So there was, there wasn't as much funding for that position, because we didn't expect to fill it when it was filled, we expected to fill it later. So because we filled it sooner, the more cops budget is going to be short of funding for that, that position being filled earlier than what was planned. And in addition to that, there were other, due to an audit of our internal processes, we determined that we could more accurately code expenses where they belong, and that increased the funding expenses for fuel and travel and training to the appropriate department. So that also increased the cost for more cops and crime prevention, so that's why we need this increase in their budget to cover those costs. Budgeted expenses for crime prevention will be increased by 60,000, and it's basically for the reasoning that there are more costs that are, that have been determined that should have been charged to crime prevention, and they don't have the funding, but they had it in their ending balance in fiscal year 21. So we're able to use that money to increase their budgets this year. So I hope that's clear enough, but that's what this augmentation is about. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? The only comment I would have is with regard to the more cops tax, that's a sales tax increase that the voters had approved some years ago. And there are, I won't call them restrictions, but there are guidelines for that money that we must maintain a level of funding when that tax was passed, or we lose the money from that tax. Is that...
I think we have to maintain, and I might ask my budget manager to come here and talk about that, but I believe it's the, the, the number of heads in the police department has to be maintained. So I don't know if this is... In the general fund, yes, that, that are funded by the general fund.
Right. So we can't reduce general fund positions and substitute positions funded by the more cops tax?
Correct. And this, and this position was budgeted in more cops, but just was filled sooner than what the budget allowed. So we knew we would be doing an augmentation in January, so we allowed him to go ahead and fill it because of the extenuating circumstances, and knew we could include this as part of tonight's meeting.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I'll move for approval of Resolution 7392.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. I, I think you're still up. Item number 14, matters pertaining to the five-year financial plan.
Okay, so item number 14 is to receive a presentation on the proposed five-year finance plan to cover the period of fiscal year 2022 to 2027. And with this as a resolution, we'll be asking you to approve that adopts the fiscal year 22 to 27 five-year financial plan for the city of Boulder City. In a little overview, during the recession of 2007 to 2009, the city adopted a requirement to develop and maintain a rolling five-year financial plan. The finance department has prepared the, the plan. Each year, we've brought it back, this is my fourth time doing it. So each year, we bring, bring forward a plan that shows that the city is fiscally sound for the next five years, and, you know, how we, we show the, the tracking of revenues and expenditures. So the purpose of the plan is to demonstrate that the city is undertaking sound financial planning principles to ensure that regardless of the state of the economy, that the city can continue to move forward and meet its obligations to its employees, creditors, and the citizens. So I'd like to go through a PowerPoint that kind of just shows us our history and looking forward five years. Okay, so... Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, so I have my... So a little bit about this plan, this is not the budget. The budget is, is different. This is a forecast that where we underestimate revenues to a reasonable extent and overestimate expenditures to, I don't want to say show in worst case, but we want to make sure that we're covered. So therefore, we kind of always look at it with, okay, what's, what's a, you know, how low could... the revenues be compared to what we expect, and how high could the expenses be? So this is a very conservative plan because we're not using it to approve a budget, we're using it to show whether we're fiscally stable. So forecasts are conservative, only including known revenue sources and not speculative new revenues. Does not include potential new solo lease revenues for leases that may exercise. And you know, when I mentioned earlier, which I'm going to say again in this presentation, that you know, they had, add a, gosh, they had, I lost the word, negotiated, excuse me, they had negotiated a lease agreement back in two thousand and eleven that they were hoping to exercise in two years. So you can't put things like that in the plan because you don't know when it's going to happen. So that's why we don't put any leases in there that may exercise. So it doesn't include any potential grants also that the city could receive, even though you can feel pretty confident it could happen, but we don't know, so we don't put it in this plan. Intergovernmental revenues, primarily C-tax, are projected only to grow at three percent, and the pre-COVID growth was at five-point-five percent. So most other revenues projected to be relatively flat, with the exception of lease revenues, which have a contractually obligated rate increase. So we keep almost all, in this five-year planning document, we keep things pretty flat. Building permit revenue does not include potential fees from future solar construction projects. Past spikes are due to receipt of such fees, licenses, and permits on the following chart. Okay. So this also is a little different than prior years, we're trying, as we do this, find ways to make it easier to understand. So this is actually the general fund revenue, and we have the actual for seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. So, and in there, we drew a box for COVID, so this is the period of time that COVID has been with the city. So as you saw and what I mentioned earlier, this is the revenue side, and it actually had this huge spike in twenty-one. And I mentioned those things, which was the town site solar permit, the one-time option payment, the C-tax was higher than what we were told to project, the CARES Act money. So those things account for this large increase. And the one thing I do want to point out on this is the very bottom line, which is kind of purplish, and it just looks like calm water all the way across the bottom, that is the taxes, that's the tax base for the city. As you can see, it makes up a very tiny component of what all of our sources are to pay our ongoing operation and maintenance costs. So the one thing I want to say about that is that pretty much is the only area that you can fully control, because everything else is kind of reliant on other matters that could happen. For instance, the C-tax, while it has increased traditionally a large amount, Boulder City population estimates came back with less population this year. So that will probably impact, maybe not to a big extent, but it will impact all of our revenues that are state, given to us from the state. So that's why we project these very conservatively. So notes on expense assumptions. Expense categories are clustered as found in the city's annual financial report. Public safety is the largest expense category. Transfers out, which will be the dark blue line on the following chart, is used to shift funds to the Acquisition and Improvement Fund for capital projects funded through the general fund. So the most recent spike in transfers out was the transfer to fund the new special reserve fund. So those, when they were created over the last two years, and we'll see that in the chart in a moment. For future growth, we assume the three percent annual growth in wage costs, that's salaries and benefits, and a point-five percent growth in other operational costs like office supplies. The transfers out of fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-seven represents potential capital expense at a maximum amount permitted by state law, ten percent of general fund operating budget, and that's state law cap. So we used the maximum we could transfer out, not saying we would, but we used that for this, which is just a extreme case planning tool. City is not obligated to spend more than the full ten percent, but is limited to not more than ten percent in any year. So when we put all that in there, that is what the expenditures look like. And you know, you can see by the different colored categories that, you know, we spend a large amount of money on public safety. So that's the pinkish-purplish portion of the expenses for the city. And you can see that during the COVID period, also the actual and then the forecast going forward based on those assumptions that I just went over. So then pairing up the revenues and the expenditures, when you do that, you know, kind of makes you gasp, saying, oh, my God, we have more expense than revenue by eight-hundred thousand. But while this is showing on the minimum revenues, maximum expenditures, we will quickly close that gap during the budget. I mean, we're working during the, starting to put together the budget now, and while these are extreme numbers, we're going to make sure we close that gap, because that's not a big gap. When you talk about, you know, thirty-four million dollar budget, we can definitely, we will close that gap by the time we adopt the budget. But I wanted to use fiscally conservative assumptions when I did this. But I want to make a few notes on the new fire positions. So the fire department is proposing to add nine new fire department positions beginning in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, and they're applying for a SAFER grant from the federal government to cover costs for the first three years. That is not included in these projections because we can't guarantee we would get that grant. And after the third year, the city is obligated at a hundred percent for those nine new employees. So the comparison chart on the next slide will not include the SAFER grant in revenue line as per past practice, and not include revenues until contracts or agreements are So hopefully, you can see, there's a red slice above the pinkish-purplish, and that's the increase in the public safety costs. It's probably not very clear, but it's right above the white box on the screen. It says the red section is the nine new firefighter positions. But by adding those, and then those are recurring costs each year. So what I said earlier is the base of the city's financing is, it's like your base salary. I mean, that's pretty much what you get every year. Now you're adding nine positions and not changing what you're getting every year could cause problems down the line. And I think there's some work to be done, not saying this can't happen, I'm just saying that we need to put our heads together. I think the city manager has said that, and the fire chief is absolutely on board with working together to try to see if we can close the possible increase in expenses that may happen with this. So I wanted to point that out tonight. I feel like the bearer of bad news, because I know, you know, it's probably needed, but I think we have to plan for it and make sure that we just don't incur all this additional forever expense and not have some plan to boost up our revenues to cover that. So on the next slide just shows the, so the next slide just shows where the revenues are and the expenses, and that gap is much bigger than the eight-hundred thousand, which we feel we'll be able to close that very easily. But this is a much larger gap, which I think requires a little bit more thought and proposed remedies to fix that going forward. So that is my presentation, and hopefully I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you very much for this presentation. I really do appreciate you breaking down, especially specifically the fire department request, because I think it's real easy for us to all say, well, of course, you know, I think I made the comment, we'd have paramedics for every family if we could afford it. It's about making sure that if we are heading in this direction, that we can do it, and that, is it worth those costs here, or could they better serve the community in other areas, you know? That is, we need this information that you're providing us right now to start to be able to come to terms on where those priorities and needs are. So I really do appreciate you putting this together and some of the focus on that for us to start to be able to make some of those decisions and think about how this will affect us in the long run. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am hesitant, again, because we look at these types of things and see, you know, lines going outside the budget, and you know, the idea, and I know you've been conservative, I do appreciate that, on things like the C-tax revenue. You know, we don't know what the picture is going to look like in three or four or five years. That's not something that's easily predicted at this time. You know, who heard of COVID before twenty-twenty? Nobody did. So that had a huge effect, and you know, the federal government made decisions to put infusions of cash under President Trump and President Biden into these communities. I'm very hesitant to approve something like this because of some of the questions that are not yet known. Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution seventy-three ninety-three?
I move to accept Resolution number seventy-three ninety-three.
I'll second it, but further discussion?
All those in favor?
I would like just a little, a little bit more discussion. I know, just Mayor, you had, you mentioned that you're not in favor of moving forward with this because of the projection. I just want to be clear on where you are and what happens if this were to not pass tonight? Is this something that is required for us, this five-year plan?
My understanding is that is one of the requirements the council has me do each year at the last meeting in January.
It has no legal effect on our budget or-
It does not. The one thing I did say at the beginning of this was, we could close the gap just by not transferring the money to the Acquisition and Improvements Fund, because that's three million dollars. So we could reduce that to close that gap. But I just wanted to show things the way they are in the most conservative way. So you know, this, there will not be an eight-hundred thousand dollar gap when you see the budget in March.
I guess my question was, is this a state requirement, or is this something that we're doing as a city for our own planning purposes?
I believe it's city requirement.
Okay, perfect, that's fine, that's fine with me. I just wanted to make sure I was aware of where, what exactly we were looking at, so thank you.
Yeah, that's what I assumed when I made the motion, that this is a presentation of, at this moment, a five-year plan. Assuming minimizing revenues and maximizing expenses. That, but doesn't mean that's where we're going to be for sure when we get there. It's just where we are now.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
So you say you come back every year and you do this five-year plan. So next year, it could look a little bit different based on-
The historical part will probably not change.
Change much.
But going forward, it could, depending on what circumstances are. I mean, it changed a lot when COVID hit. So yeah, there was, it's a fluid situation, that's why you really can't go back and look at last year and say, well, you said this last year. Well, last year was a different set of circumstances than this year. And I think this is, you know, I think it's a good tool to use to kind of look at the worst-case scenario, which is what this does. And even at worst-case scenario, the city is still in good stead. And you know, I wanted to just highlight that we do need to, you know, consider about the firefighters, because I know that's something the city would really like to have, and I support that. I just think we need to be responsible and think about how we're going to fund it on a continual basis. That's why I put that in there.
If it's something we're considering, we need to be honest about it, so.
Any other questions or comments regarding the motion on the floor? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote nay. Thank you, Ms. Pelletier. I believe you actually have an opportunity to have a seat now.
Yep, thank you.
Item number fifteen has been removed. We'll move to item number sixteen for possible action, Resolution seventy-three ninety-five. Mr. City Manager?
This will be City Attorney Brittany Walker. Thank you, thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item sixteen, for your consideration, is a resolution approving the cooperative agreement for the Chief Local Elected Official Consortium and the establishment of Workforce Connections as a Joint Powers Authority for the Southern Nevada Workforce Development Area. The Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of two thousand and fourteen is a federal act that allocates funding for workforce development service in the locally determined workforce development areas. The cities of Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Henderson, and Boulder City, as well as the counties of Clark, Lincoln High, and Osmerelda, have entered into the Chief Local Elected Official Consortium Agreement as of July eighth, twenty fifteen. This reestablished the consortium of elected officials for Southern Nevada Workforce Development. The two thousand and fifteen agreement designated Workforce Connections as the local workforce development board for Southern Nevada to administer the programs, things like employment training, and things of that nature. This is a clarification that's needed to establish Workforce Connections as a Joint Powers Authority pursuant to this agreement, and it replaces the two thousand and fifteen agreement in accordance with Nevada law, so that the Workforce Connections can continue to be a subrecipient of workforce development federal funds, and also restates the respective roles and responsibilities of each public body. This is going before all of the public bodies mentioned previously, and I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Anyone wishing to make a motion on Resolution seventy-three ninety-five?
I move to accept Resolution number seventy-three ninety-five.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Move to item number seventeen for possible action, City Council Appointment to Regional Flood Control District Citizen Advisory Committee. Madam City Clerk, did you have any background you'd like to provide?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the Citizens Advisory Committee was created to represent public interest and advise the board. The CAC is composed of fourteen members, the Clark County Commission, each city council, and each member of the board appoints one member to serve on the CAC. This appointment is for two years, and we have two residents who have submitted their names to be considered. One is Chad Shoup, and the other is Jessica Preston.
Thank you. Any nominations that anyone would like to offer on this? Councilmember Adams?
Just based off of what we received here, and unfortunately, you know, these did come in a little late for us, but it seems to be that the person with some actual education in geology would be Jessica Preston, so I would nominate her.
Any other names? Any other names to be offered into nomination? Okay, we have a nomination by Councilmember Adams, and a second for that nomination. I know it's been brought up before, I guess we should all say aye if we are in favor of that.
Aye.
Will that be sufficient, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Item number eighteen, City Manager's Report. Mr. City Manager?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight's City Manager's Report consists of the claims paid for December twenty-twenty-one, as well as the financial report for December twenty-twenty-two, twenty-one, sorry. And I have nothing unusual to report this evening.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the City Manager's Report? Thank you, Mr. Tetter. Brings us to our final public comment period. Public comment during this period may be on any- Public comment during this period may be on any subject. Each person will have up to five minutes to speak, and as always, we ask that you be civil and concise. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in the final public comment? Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening, Council. My name is David Barker. I'm a citizen of Boulder City. I'm here to speak on 1913 that was just introduced. I do stand here respectfully in opposition to that effort. My concern is focused primarily on the language, the restrictive, what I view to be the restrictive language of the, of the changes in the ordinance. I look forward to further discussion with members of the council on what I mean by that. I would ask you, as you read it and prepare for your hearing that you just scheduled for the eighth, to think about the fact that this language appears to me to be so restrictive that somebody simply deciding to play fetch with their dog in the park, which commonly happens, would be criminalized. And I'm, I plan on forwarding to you or through council how I get there, and I look forward to speaking with you individually about that so you can make a fair decision on whether this is appropriate. And with that, I thank you for the evening.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else present that would like to speak? Please state your name.
Thank you, Council. My name is Fred DiMano. I'm a resident of Boulder City, and I just want to say I am totally opposed to the language in this new ordinance for your leash law, quote unquote. You know, I kind of feel like it would be a wonderful thing if I lived in a communist state, maybe. I don't know. I just don't like all the restrictions that are put in place and then left up to someone to interpret on my behalf. So I hope that you will all consider this, give this a lot of consideration before moving forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present that would like to speak? Please come forward, state your name.
Good evening. My name is Sonia Mongili. I am also a resident in Boulder City.
Sorry, would you state your name again? I'm not sure the microphone picked it up.
Sonia Mongili. I also would like to express my concern about the leash law, based on the fact that I think that dogs become a lot more aggressive when they are on leash. My little dog, Benjamin, nine pounds, got attacked by two dogs on leash. Because of course, dogs lose confidence when they are very restricted, and especially when they are around their handler. Because naturally, they tend to believe that they need to protect the handler. So at that point, when each dog is on leash, basically, it's like we cannot even approach our friends because we need to be afraid of the dog being too aggressive. Now, I do understand that we have to come to a point where handlers are responsible and maybe take their dogs to training, yes, but to have every single dog on leash takes away from also the ability to socialize within the dogs and the people. It's like, dogs are a little bit like us, and they are actually us. So it's like two years of COVID. How did we live? Restricted. And how did we felt? People are more aggressive. There are problems all over. We want to go out. We don't want to wear a mask. I think the dogs, in a similar way, feel too much of a restriction. So I think it's actually up to the owner. Maybe we should think about a solution towards that, more training. There are wonderful trainers here in town, but a complete restriction maybe should be re, I'm just asking for a rethinking it, maybe put it in a different way, for everybody to be happy and safe, of course. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we will take phone calls then at this time. Anyone wishing to call in for the final public comment period?
Public comment?
Yes, I have public comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, good evening again, Council. For the record, Fred Volz. After listening to all the shifts of money from fund to fund and project to project in tonight's meeting, it's more than a little concerning that the mindset is to spend, spend, and spend some more on any fancy that can be found because of a temporary income glut. In looking at American Rescue Plan Act provisions, it would appear that the 20-plus million dollars coming from the federal government should be used, at least in part, to reduce the debt in the utility fund by taking the water and wastewater projects and funding them from ARPA money, then use the CIP project money already allocated from rate pair bills to pay down the $23 million SNWA debt at the next available opportunity. Since we don't know how many capital projects the utility department can project manage at any given time, and the track record has been of overpromising and underdelivering within a given year, we don't need to take on additional capital projects that can't be done because of too few project managers, staff, and/or consultants. As for the fire department's many large increases, it is concerning that the fire chief has added several administrative personnel and significantly boosted emergency response charges for residents who are already paying large dollars for fire and EMS services through existing public funding. The fire chief now wants a second fire station, a remodeled main fire station, and nine new employees for a population that decreased by over 1,000 people in the latest census. It seems the fire chief should be working with the local hospital to expand treatment options that would require less shuttling of EMS patients to Henderson and beyond. It seems the fire chief should be seeking changes in questionable high staffing numbers he previously claimed were required for EMS call responses so that we don't send an entire shift of firefighters to one EMS call, leaving no one else to respond to other EMS calls or an actual fire. And I would ask that these comments be added to the record verbatim. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, anyone wishing to call for our final public comment period? Again, this is the final public comment period for City Council Meeting. Madam City Clerk, were there any emailed comments for the final public comment period?
No written comments were received.
Thank you. Hearing no others then, we will close the final public comment period and have our final item, Council Reports. Councilmember Jorgensen?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Fox?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Last Thursday, the SNWA did approve of the recommendations and definitions for non-functional turf, for the non-functional turf removal that is required now by state law. For those who, you know, just for generalization, basically it is considered any turf that is otherwise only utilized by those who perhaps mow it. It's not used for recreation or any other purposes other than for aesthetic purposes. The State of Nevada and Southern Nevada Water Authority has deemed that to be not necessary and to conserve, since turf is one of the largest uses of our, of our water resource. And once that water is used, it's gone. So that, that will be coming forward, and then us as all the municipalities and cities will have to participate. It does not affect a single-family residential. I think that's important so that everybody understands this is for businesses, HOAs, apartment complex areas. There is an allotted amount based on density and unit size, so I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that that is something that's going to be coming forward here pretty soon. Also, sorry, immunization clinic, for those of you who are here watching at home, there will be an immunization clinic held at the Boulder City Library by SNHD tomorrow from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, wear a mask and get vaccinated. That's, and if you need financial help and you're dealing with the emergencies that come from financial insecurity or COVID-based issues, call Emergency Aid and make an appointment. That's it.
Thank you. You know, I know that I frequently do it at the end of our council meetings, and that's talk about the impact of COVID. Something that I think we can take a look at graphically that I haven't shown before, Holly, is that something that you can zero in on? This is what we get as reports for the number of positive cases. So this area here was last January, and this area here is this January. We had an enormous surge last year around the holidays. It has become even a higher surge this year. We are starting to see it fall off. I certainly hope that continues. That's what is being seen in other places in the country. But when we start to get these types of numbers, I know it was mentioned earlier of lines around the fire station for testing, we had been down to a point where we were doing just maybe a couple of dozen tests, I think, a week, and there was discussion of, well, should we end the testing? I said, you know, based on what the experience had been last year, we may see that again this year. We're very fortunate, Chief Gray was able to continue to get supplies. We have not run out, although we've run very low. We still have this virus around. You know, the fatality rate has been less with this Omicron variant, but it is still a problem, and the vaccination clinics, you can contact the local pharmacies here, the local hospital. We still need to get past this and take steps to make sure that we're not continuing this any further than we absolutely need to. So, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening, and this meeting's adjourned.
Have a good evening, everyone.